Good afternoon, everyone. Today is March 11th, 2025. It's 1:00 P. M. It's a City of Prescott Study Session. Good afternoon, Janet.
Good afternoon.
We'll start with roll call.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Ken Tellme.
Here.
Councilwoman True Worth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusin.
Here.
All are present.
Items on our study session today. The first one is a presentation discussion regarding an update on the pavement management program. Janet Ramsey.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Janet Ramsey, Public Works. And our hair at the podium is Greg Patrick, somebody you're getting used to seeing around town. He's been doing a lot of work and we're pretty excited to talk about that. So let me see if I can get my PowerPoint rolling here. Okay. So as mentioned, we have a pavement management program update. So you'll recall a few months back, we had, we asked for your approval for a technical condition survey. That was a fancy van with lots of technical equipment that went around the city. I think they did that in late October approximately.
Actually, it was around July or August, I mean.
So into the, into the summer and into the fall. Greg's the technical guy. You can, you can be clear here. So he's going to correct me whenever I make a mistake. But yeah, actually, they did do the technical survey. And that, and do that survey, they tested all of our city roads. Now, to be clear, those are our paved, dedicated city roads. So it's not private roads. It's not alleys and it's not parking lots and other things like that. It is truly just the city's roads. And they use a lot of technical equipment. So everything from the visualization through cameras and lenses to some lasers and even some sonographic equipment, sonar equipment that tests what it hears underground to give us some greater details of the depth of the pavement and some of those conditions underground. So it's a pretty technical survey and there is a ton of information that goes into that. As they drive around the city and they collect all of this information, then they convert it magically to data that we get in a software system. And that's where the real work begins. And that, that technical stuff that the, that the van gathers as they drive around, that's really cool, but the work comes when we get that data. And so we have to take that data and make it make sense within the City of Prescott. And that's what we've been working on. So of course, I want to start with a little bit of a review of payment management. Payment management is one of the most visible things we do in the city. Residents and visitors see the condition of our roads and sometimes they make comment about it. And so that tends to be a topic of interest on, in any city topic. You will, as you recall, back in October, we aired, well, July, August, that timeframe, we had that technical survey with the numbers. Greg has been working on putting that together into a pavement management program. The, the best part about having a technical data program for payment management is that it takes all of the subjectivity out of it from the citizens and from council's perspective. We look at it, we take this, this objective data and we can make a formula based on our budget. And we can, we can tell you that it's not just about worst first and about the squeaky wheel. It really is a data-based program that helps us to get to our desired results, which is the best possible payment under all the circumstances that we have and within the budget that we have. So the first slide we have, again, this is a kind of a payment management 101. But as you see, when we build a new payment or when we do a, a complete restoration of new payment, we're at that top left, that little orange bar up there. And as payment goes through its life cycle, it starts to fall pretty quickly from good at the top to bad at the bottom, needing a reconstruction. That can happen in about 20, 30 years. I'd say it's probably closer to 20 under our conditions with the freeze thaw, plows and all the things that we have here going on in the city. So our job is to keep that orange line, to take that orange line off and bounce it back up to the purple lines that you see there. And that's what we want to continue to do over the life cycle of our payments. So each time we'll get a little, there are diminishing results, but each time we do a payment preservation, we improve the road condition, we take it back up to a good condition. In a few years, we'll do it again and we'll do it again. So one of the things that you hear from citizens a lot of times is they just did that road. Why haven't they done my road? And that's what we want to talk about a little bit more today because payment preservation is of course our emphasis. So our objective is-
Janet, what's the X-axis on your chart?
Um, I believe that-
Seven years?
I'm sorry. Where are we talking about, sir?
The X-axis.
Horizontal line.
On the horizontal line.
Can you see it, Greg?
It is, it's going to be years.
Seven years?
Okay.
So each one of those is one, two, three, four, et cetera.
I'm sorry, yes, of course. So good to bad in years out on-
Right. And S Y is square yards?
Yes.
Dollars per square yard?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. So of course, our objective is to apply the most cost-effective treatments that restore payment condition fast enough to slow the rate of degradation as it goes through the process and extend the life cycle. Again, at the top of the graph is a new payment. At the bottom is when it needs to be reconstructed. And so throughout its life cycle, we're going to try to, to prolong that as long as possible. And that's possible up to 50 years and in some cases even more. So from 20 to 50 years, it's pretty easy to see the cost difference and the cost efficiencies in that. With the emphasis on preservation, our annual budget for payment management is broken into two major categories, preservation and reconstruction. Preservation is everything we do to forestall condition decline from seal coats and slurry seals to mill and overlay and even rehabilitation, which may be small-scale reconstruction projects and then something like a surface treatment and mill and overlay over the top. Excuse me. Our budget for presentation, for preservation this year was $10 million and Greg's going to tell you in a minute that we covered a lot of ground for that money this year. When payment conditions fall to the point that we have to reconstruct, we call that a backlog. Reconstruction is programmed on a different track because when we remove all the damaged asphalt and repair the substructure, then we have to coordinate with all the underground utilities, water, wastewater, all of those kinds of things. And we have to repair and replace those as needed. We often have to re-engineer the project and so the complexity becomes much greater exponentially.
Sorry to interrupt. Does the funding for this project come out of the 1% road tax?
No, ma'am, it does not. The funding for all of our projects come from the Streets Fund.
Okay.
It's not funded by the General Fund. Okay, so wanted to give you just a little bit of a visual representation of what payment condition looks like. So payment condition, these are what we would call backlog and these are actually not our roads. We had to, we couldn't find anything that looked quite this bad. Forbis is ours, correct, Greg?
Yes, Forbis is ours.
Okay. So Forbis is ours, but at the top there, that, that's completely failed where you see that. That's a, that is very poor condition, failed condition, and that means backlog. We have to count, to put that into our reconstruction budget, it's no longer eligible for payment preservation. Same thing here. Payment is still very poor in serious condition. It's going to need probably complete reconstruction, if not at least a, a very significant rehabilitation program followed by some, some fairly expensive preservation treatments after that. We try to avoid the backlog, of course, because it's, is very expensive. So when we get to, okay, yeah, this is another with payment condition in this range, we're rapidly approaching failure. So it's still usable, it's still functionable, functional, but we're rapidly approaching failure. So rehabilitation efforts include significant repairs. Sometimes those are performed by contractors, sometimes those are internal with streets maintenance for the damaged areas. Typically the edges and sometimes we'll do an edge mill treatment or remove and replace certain sections of the payment and then follow that with mid-range preservation treatments. So we're continuing to keep the life cycle up, still keeping the costs down, less than they would be for reconstruction, but if we wait much longer, they'll fall into that reconstruction. The good news is that less than 8% of our total payment inventory is in this backlog category. So everything in this range. So this is the fair condition pavement in the fair to satisfactory categories and a critical stage for maintenance and rehabilitation. We can still save it with relatively inexpensive restorative treatments, but when we begin to see the large block cracks and the large alligator cracking, that's when we start to see potholes and then rapidly declining conditions. That's just another. The payment preservation at this stage is about 1/4th or less of reconstruction. So obviously that's why, this is where we want to be right in here. This is where we want to be doing our work. Maintenance will be able to do some of the preparatory work. So again, sometimes those edges need milled, sometimes we have to take out some significantly damaged sections where there've been utility cuts and things like that. But then we follow with a payment preservation treatment to restore the appearance, the function and of course, the longevity. This is where the majority of our inventory sits in this range. This is over 61% of our category. And then good, good to better condition pavement, this is nearly 20, 28% of our inventory. That's going to be newer roads or those that have been recently reconstructed. And at this point is the ideal point where we want to start our payment preservation. So this is where people will say to you, why are you doing that? Because my neighborhood looks worse. This is why, because if we can keep the pavement in this condition for as long as possible, we're talking about $12 a square yard to treat this in a payment preservation versus $500 a square yard for reconstruction. And then this is my favorite slide because I love a good bar chart. But this is a good graphic of where we stand overall in our payment condition as the results or with the results from RAS. The red and the gray, those are the backlog and those streets that are represented by red and gray, and you're going to see a map here in a little bit, those that are in those categories are already on our program and they're being plotted for reconstruction. Again, those become exponentially more complex because of the engineering and all of the other resources that they take in plus, they're that much more expensive. So we want to make sure that we're doing, we're balancing the greater part of our budget into the preservation categories. That's all the really good stuff there. The orange all the way over to the greens, those are the good categories. Those are the ones we want to preserve for as long as possible and that's where our cost efficiencies are. So again, in 2023 to 24 fiscal years, we spent 7.6 and 7.3 million dollars respectively. This year, we have about $10 million budgeted and I think we're going to come as close to that mark as we ever have. So again, and that's in preservation. So again, that's Greg doing the good work with the rest of the team to make sure that we put that preservation work out there. And in the meantime, those things that fall into the backlog, those are being scheduled by Capitol. So that's, that's Tim Sherwood's group and he takes over from that point and starts to work, is still with Greg, but he starts to work with coordinating all of the utilities and doing all the things that are necessary to get that done. So then at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So as a payment program manager, my, my role is to analyze and manage the factors that drive our payment maintenance and rehabilitation projects. Our aim is to maintain and improve our roadway networks, payment condition index, or the PCI, while working within our budget. So far, the, with the assistance of roadway asset services, which is known as RAS is what she was referring to, we've evaluated every paved road under our responsibility and the maps and charts that you see today are reflecting that data. Currently, I am validating and organizing this information, which includes creating supersegments, these large groupings of roadway segments within similar characteristics. So they have to have similar traffic patterns, pavement conditions and maintenance needs, allowing us to execute projects more efficiently across broader areas rather than treating each segment individually. Once these supersegments are established, we will upload the data and run scenarios. These scenarios will, are data-driven and they'll give us recommendations as to where we need to do our projects for the payment management probably. Based on RAS's analysis, our citywide PCI average is currently a 74, placing us in the satisfactory range. The map predominantly displays yellow for fair and green for satisfactory and good, which aligns with our earlier graph that we were just showing you. Maintaining roads in this condition is cost-effective because preventative maintenance extends the life of the road, covers more roadway and reduces long-term costs. The reducing of the long-term cost is essential for keeping our infrastructure in optimal condition and preventing costly deteriorations. While preservation is our primary focus, we are also addressing the lower-rated roads that require extra coordination with city infrastructures, as Janet said, with water and sewer, as well as private utilities like the gas company. This comprehensive approach ensures that we manage our pavement network efficiently and serve the community while staying within our budget. You want to go to the next slide, Janet? All right. Since July last year, we have completed nearly 32 center lane miles of pavement management projects. These projects utilize some of the following treatments, rejuvenation, fog seal, micro seal, chip seal, cape seal, which is a combination of the last two. It's a chip-
Greg, Councilmember Rusin has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. You mentioned center lane miles?
Yes.
I've heard of just lane miles. Could you explain the difference?
Yeah, yeah. So center lane miles are easier for us to illustrate to the public and to you guys. Center lane miles would be two miles of Willow Creek Road is the same as Willow, a residential road. If we were to try and do lane miles, then we have to try and start breaking it down into how many lanes each road is. And it's, it's a little bit more difficult for people to comprehend that type of a scenario because you have the center lane, you have two travel lanes, you also have turn lanes and turn bays and things like that. So for the purposes of presentation and for that type of thing, we're going to go with center lane miles. That way, it's a little easier for you guys to kind of picture. If you were to travel 32 miles, you know what that's like on the road versus I say lane miles. You don't know if that's residential, you don't know if it's main road.
And so just to, just to reiterate, Mayor and Council, that's linear miles and, and Greg said it pretty quietly, but 32 linear miles that he completed in this last year. So that's actually a lot of ground that we've covered. Of 762, give or take, is our current inventory. So that's-
Center lane, 300, yeah, 375.
Right, so we should speak in the same terms. So 370 miles in center lane, so 32 miles out of that. Center line, that's a big accomplishment in the last year. And I love a before and after picture, Greg. This was a great success, so I want you to brag just a little bit about this one.
Yeah. So here on the photos, this is West Merritt facing west, where the road had a PCI of roughly 37. Following the repairs, which was a thin overlay, the PCI was brought up to 90. Go to the next page. These photos were taken on Meadow Ridge Road facing north. The road had a PCI of roughly 50 before the project, which was a cape seal. Like I said, it's a chip seal with a micro seal over the top. And again, it was brought up to nearly a 90 following that project. These photos were before and after of Rim Trail facing west. Prior to the project, the PCI had a PCI of 65. Following the project, it was an 85. And then we'll go to the next slide. So regarding our upcoming projects, something we wanted to touch base on is in these, this one, the specific one, will begin next week and it'll continue until June. The surface treatments will be applied to Whipple, Monizuma, from Willow Creek to LaGuardia Bridge and Gurley Street from Bradshaw to Virginia.
Councilman Gambogi.
On the roads prior to this photo?
Yes.
How much did that cost to fix it per square yard?
On this specific one, roughly about $12 a square yard for micro seal.
Good management, thank you.
Again, versus 500.
Yeah. So a lot easier, a lot, a lot better cost. So for, let's see here. The costs or the amount to repair Whipple, Monizuma and Gurley were approved through the AEL program. However, I am requesting that night work be approved for aspects of this project to try and reduce the impact on the traffic. And that's during the regular voting session on consent agenda. The photos on the left was taken on West Gurley. The PCI for this area is about a 54 and we're hoping to bring it up to about a 90. The photo on the right is Whipple Street and that's approximately a 45 and we're hoping to get it up into the mid to high 80s by the time we do a double micro seal on that one. In addition to this project, one that recently came in, it happened between the time I submitted this till now, is a seal coat. The seal coat is going to utilize recycled tires and it'll utilize about 20 to 27 tires per mile. The sustainable treatment will be applied to Willow Lake Road, Williamson Valley Road, Iron Springs Road, Gail Gardner Way, Fair Street and Haciompa Village Lane. It's scheduled to begin sometime in April and conclude in June. And I'm excited for everyone to see the outcome of both these projects as well as many more. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Janet.
Okay.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. So you outlined already to us, that's for the fiscal year starting July of '24, you've done 32 center line miles?
Yes.
Correct? And when you add the remaining streets you just spoke about, including, I love the recycled tires, that's super cool.
Yes, I've noticed it about that.
Maybe we can do a field trip?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think that'd be cool. But anyhow, where will-
I didn't know other people got as excited about pavement as we do.
Well, I'm into new technology and doing things, so I kind of like the idea, but I hope it holds up. That's the question that I'd be interested in learning.
Quite a bit in this.
Yeah, we actually had, I've actually had quite a bit of experience with it. It's tire rubber modified slurry seal, right, Greg? Got that right?
Tire rubber modified.
Yeah, so it's a great use of, of that crumb rubber. So they crumble it into a tiny little, it's almost like little fibers. They crumble that, they mix it in, it gives it some good elasticity and it also helps make it look black. So, you know, in the road, in road construction, black equals good.
Yes.
And people like to see that. It also represents some good things about it because it helps to retard the oxidation process. So-
Very cool.
As it starts to turn gray because the sun and the, and the elements are hitting.
So my, my question is, you said 32 so far. When you add all of this that you just outlined to be done by June, how many miles will we have accomplished this year? For what size was it still $10 million budget? Is that what you said?
Yes, it is.
10 million. I would have to check on that. I'm not 100% sure on that, that number just yet.
Okay.
So I haven't had a chance to calculate all the, the repairs in.
Because not, these are not the only roads that we still have left to do in this fiscal year. So these are the highlights.
Oh, okay.
But there's some-
Well, I'd be interested in understanding for $10 million, how many center line miles did we purchase so that down the road, we all understand for budgeting purposes?
Right.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So one of the really great things about payment management is, is that there's, especially in the preservation categories, Greg puts together a number of projects and he really puts together more projects than we can afford to do in any given year. But he keeps those on the shelf. And so if money frees itself up, so for instance, there's some kind of a conflict or there's some other reason why we can't get to that, to other roads, and that happens all the time. Quite frankly, before Greg's full-time attention to this, that would have been a real challenge for us to put something, re-scramble and put something back on the table. But that's literally what Greg is doing is he's finding, I call it couch cushion money, you know? So he, anything that's left on the table, we're gathering that up and we're trying to put that on the road because that's where it does the value. We've budgeted that money, it's in our budget and we want to spend as much of it as possible on the roads and that's literally what Greg does.
Councilman Gambogi.
Greg, I've got three questions. How does this reuse of rubber tire compare to asphalt in terms of durability?
Well, it's a seal coat, so it's a completely different project. So it's basically just spraying it on, letting it cure. It's sealing the road as well as preventing it, like I said, oxidization, things of that nature. So it's not an asphalt. It's applied to the roads that are in the good to fair condition and it's trying to preserve those in that condition so that they don't drop into that other deal. So it's not going to hold up like asphalt because it is just a seal coat, but it comes in at a much reasonable more cost or much less cost.
Second question, does that improve traction then?
It would probably improve the friction, yes, at that point.
So then can we buy cheaper tires now?
Put them back into the program.
I think that's a great idea.
You don't have to answer that.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this is for Greg or Janet, but there seems to be some roads in Prescott that are particularly troublesome and that we seem to work on frequently. And maybe some of its use, I'm not sure, but I see that Whipple's on the program again and we've done Whipple several times in the last 10 years probably. Another one that seems to deteriorate quickly is Ruth Street. And I know in the area around the high school, the hospital, Iron Springs, we have a lot of springs. We have underground sources of water and maybe that's contributing to the deterioration of some of the roads in that area. But can you speak to why, like Whipple and Rue Street seem to need to be worked on so frequently?
Yeah. I'll take a stab at it, Greg, and then you can fill in the blanks, okay? So absolutely, traffic is a big factor. It's been, I don't know even how many years since these were reconstructed, but I'd say they're older roads as well. They take a lot of traffic and Whipple, Gurley as well, they have some interesting topography there too. So the difference in the elevations, drainage, all of those factors. And then again, we're, we're taking on some pretty heavy summers with lots of heat and then we freeze and plow all throughout the winter. So there's a lot of things going on. The other thing is that in these main arterials where you're seeing so much traffic, you're also seeing a lot of utilities that are in the, that are in the ground. And as, even as we do our best to try to re-compact and get those back, utilities always have their impacts on roadway surfaces. So whatever's happening underground is reflected at the top and, and we do our best to prevent that through compaction and through proper construction, but that, we have to deal with it for the, for its life cycle. So at this point, we're doing our best to keep these alive because the reconstruction is going to be ridiculously expensive. It would blow the $10 million budget out of the water before we even got started. And, and that's before we, we got to the engineering and all the coordination with the utilities and the other things that we'd have to do. So our job is to keep these roads going in good condition for as long as possible.
Yeah. And to add to that, I think the last time Whipple, you saw Whipple come before you guys, it was actually Whipple between Miller Valley and Gail Gardner and they did a surface treatment on that. This section between Willow Creek and basically Monizuma has not been surface treated in a long time. I can't remember the last time.
I remember that area was paved and then there was a problem with the paving with like this undulating surface and it had to be shaved. was like this undulating surface, then it had to be shaved, and then it had to be coated again. And that's all been within the last probably 10 years, that's like where Sonic is, that area of Whipple. It has been very problematic.
Yeah, they did a small area right there around the corner with the micro seal, and that's held up pretty well. And that was about, about the same time, about two years ago, three years ago. But they haven't done a full surface re-treatment. And I know we've had some water line breaks in that area as well. And then in regards to Ruth Street, Ruth is on, that is the anticipated path for the forced main sewer line. And so that will be addressed then. I don't want to go in there and do that work, or any kind of work ahead of that, that project, because we will take care of that road as it, as that, that project proceeds. That's part of that coordination with the other utilities that we have to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to the, the bar chart with the colors?
It's my favorite.
I know, it's my favorite too.
Okay, I may need a good help here. Sarah. Can we pull the, there we go. Okay. Where'd it go? It's in there. Promise.
Back, back.
I got happy with the clicker and... Sorry, that was way harder than it should have been.
There we go. Okay.
Pretty good with the remote, generally.
My question is for the, I think you said the gray and the serious, the failed and the serious go over to capital because you've got to budget it along with doing utilities work and all that other stuff. So I'm not, I'm not talking about that shade of red. I'm talking about the, the red and the orange remaining. How many of those streets are we getting done in '25? And how many of those are we getting, like what's the goal by the time we wrap up this year and the time we wrap up next year? That the people who live on bright red and orange streets are going to be happy as compared to it sliding further to the left?
Yeah. So like I said, the goal is to catch those before they fall into the complete disrepair. Right now, I'm currently working, like I said, with RAS to build those super segments, and those would be, they're geologic, or geographically kind of bound or together as well as the PCI is similar. Once we get that done, that program will recommend where we should go next and what we should spend our money on to get the most bang for our buck.
But will we be able to get any of that done in the spring before the June budget runs out?
And so these numbers are actually, like I said, from July of last year, and some of those have already been dealt with. If you were, could you go back to the map real quick, Janet?
Yeah. No?
Oh, well, see.
Which direction?
There we go.
All right. So some of these, such as, and I showed you pictures of it, Merritt, were in that category. Those have already been dealt with this year. Again, this data is since July last year. I just, we, we only get it periodically through the time. And we'll be able to keep up on the maps as we enter the data and as we move forward with the program. We'll be able to give you more up-to-date information. But this map is as of July last year. So those 32 miles of roadway that we did do not reflect in this map as well. Like I said, so for example, Merritt Street is one. The one that's, other, one that stands out there is Meadow Ridge. The other picture that I gave you, it's red on the map there, but I was able to, to bring it back.
So would it be possible for you, once you finish all of the grouping and all that other stuff, to give us when, when we get to talking about the budget by May, could we get an understanding of what's going to happen with these bright red and orange streets by the end of fiscal year '26?
I think we'll have a much better handle on it. Like Greg, what Greg's trying to say is that a lot of these, there's so much that we don't know about them. So in other words, they've been flagged, we understand that they're in poor condition. The assessment then from that point goes much more in-depth. Some of them will have to be completely engineered. Is that a one-year project, a two-year project? I can tell you that they're all on the radar, and within the next few months, we will have that. We have 26 plant, projects pretty well planned out. It does include some of these. And then, and in fact, like Greg said, a lot of these red areas have already been turned back to green or, or yellow because they've already been improved. But we, we're a little premature in giving this presentation to you, but what I wanted to get to was the big reveal because we did have a previous PCI, and now we have a new PCI. So that's our payment condition index, our grade, our score across the board. And so our previous condition index was, Greg?
Around a 65, I believe, with the-
Right. And, and currently, RAS has given us a new grade, which is?
74.
So that's a nine-point improvement over the last several years. And we'll tell you that our budgets increased slightly. We had a, back in '23, we had about $7.5 million, same, we spent about $7.5 million. So we bumped it up a little bit, and this year, we've had $10 million. And like I said, Greg intends to spend every bit of that to the extent possible. And then we have the $4 million for reconstruction, and that will also be going towards projects. Not all at the same pace, but they are definitely on the radar. And yes, we, we do intend to get those programmed as quickly as possible.
This is just something that the public talks about all the time. The weather and the condition of the streets.
Right.
So it's like one of those things that if we could, as you know the information, put out public information updates, so as far out as possible, so people know, even if it's not going to be for the year, at the end of the year, that they know their streets are going to be, you know, addressed, or at least it's in the budget. That would be something that would really help bring the, bring the anxiety level down.
And, and so through the program, the goal of it is to have a five-year rolling plan. Doesn't mean that we're going to stick to it, doesn't mean that it's set in stone, but it is to have a five-year plan.
I love having a five-year rolling plan. Thank you.
That is, that is the goal. I'm hoping to have everything back to you guys, you know, here as soon as I can. I am working on it, and when that information becomes available, I guarantee you, we'll be back to share that because we're excited about it as well.
Councilmember Rusing.
I just wanted to thank the Streets Department for all their hard work, and it's always good to see our tax dollars reinvested into our infrastructure such as roads. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Well, thanks Greg, thanks Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
All right, we'll move on to Item B, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Prescott Lakes Planned Area Development Master Plan and Development Agreement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. A few months ago, there was some discussion that came to council during the call to the public regarding a 400-unit apartment complex going into Prescott Lakes. And this was originally proposed in 2022, I believe. And there's been some correspondence and some disagreements on the development agreement within Prescott Lakes. And as you know, and you have the development agreement in your packets, but the development agreement was signed in 2004, and it had, it resolved a bunch of previous agreements where the developers had entitlements of different sorts. But at that meeting where the 400-unit apartment complex was brought up, council asked that we discuss a little bit more the DA and master plan in Prescott Lakes. And I should tell you, the 400-unit apartment complex has lapsed, and so that's not currently on the table. But I think it's worth having this discussion now, especially because we don't have kind of the, the fear of this large apartment complex coming in. Because sometime later, some apartment complex or some project will come forward, and it's worth discussing this now. So we first wanted to address kind of the main concerns that we've been hearing from the community. And I'll tell you, we had a, a meeting with council member Ferworth and Mayor Pro Tim Cantalme, and some representatives from the Community Association. I think it was really good and productive to kind of establish where we are. And we didn't come out of the meeting in full agreement on everything, but we're able to understand each other a little bit better. But here are some of the concerns and some that we agree with. So first is that the city cannot unilaterally amend the master plan, and we agree as a city, we can't amend the master plan. We can't unilaterally amend it or even start the process of amending the master plan. That is a right that's held by the developer parties. And so as they come forward with different projects, they may choose to amend the master plan, and, and that's the process that starts that. Then there's some concerns about the water rights that remain, and I'll talk about that a little bit. This is kind of my section to talk about the water rights, and I'll speak about that in a minute. And I will tell you, we weren't in full agreement on that. And then we've heard for a couple of years that projects require density transfers. So within the development agreement, there's a concept of different units within the project, and if the, a, a new project comes in that exceeds that unit density, then it has to be transferred, density has to be transferred from some other unit. And we agree with that. And in fact, we have requested that the density transfer be done for projects, the 400-unit apartment project, which has now gone away, and another project that's pending, which is a 22-unit apartment. I'll tell you that the density transfer cannot be done by the city. It can only be done by one party that's specifically enumerated within the development agreement, PL. And that's the defined developer. The, then the next issue is that only developer parties can transfer density, and as I mentioned, it's one developer party that's defined in the development agreement. And finally, that planned area developments require council approval. And Chelsea will address that a little bit. So the two issues we'll focus on are the water rights and the PAD approval process.
Councilmember Rusing, you had a comment?
So I just wanted to make sure that when the plan, the development agreement was amended, well, not amended, a new one was signed on September 21st, '04, it didn't change the master plan, it only applied to the development agreement.
It, it approved the master plan in 2004, and it restated and amended the master, the development agreement as well. So it was a new start in 2004.
Yeah.
But with existing entitlements that were brought over into this document.
And when you talk about water, you know, this is a groundwater subdivision, and it's under the auspices of ADWR. And when you talk about density transfers, water goes with those density units, right?
Water is an adjunct to density.
Yeah, okay.
Transfers.
Okay, thank you.
So, and, and I guess the number of units that are available and the number of water that, the amount of water we're committed to is part of where we're, there's some disagreement. So we just wanted to address this briefly. And this is found in, Section 305 is where it starts, dealing with density transfers, dealing with the water, committed water, dealing with the approved density. So then this, there's a few numbers that you'll hear over and over again. One is this 2718, the total committed city water. So this is what we promised to give them. This number didn't, wasn't made up. It was based on preliminary plaits within the Prescott Lakes area at the time. So that number, the 2718, was added to the amount of previously approved and entitled lots in the previous documents. And so in 3.5, you'll see that 2718 units reflect on the preliminary plaits approved by the city, and an additional 786 units under the previously superseded agreements is a total of 3504 units and is defined as approved density. So 3504 is by definition in the document, the approved density. And then you'll find in a later section that if by October of 2012, and then there's a 60-day extension, but if by October of 2012, the developers have not converted the 2718 preliminary plat units into final plaits, and that there's at least 350 units of unused density, then the developers lose 350 units of approved density. And so this approved density, unused density is all relevant to how you make this determination. And again, by definition in the agreement, approved density is 3504. Unused density, and I'll just read from the document, "The term unused density shall be calculated as the difference between approved density, which is 3504, and the number of platted units at such time under approved and recorded final plaits, plus any multifamily units not specifically reflected on a plat." So at this point, the 3504 has been reduced to 3154. That's the maximum permitted density within Prescott Lakes. The committed water by the city is 2718, and that hasn't changed. And so I just provided this slide with this, as I mentioned, the definitions from the document. And so this is where there's some dispute. You've probably seen some of the information about the 350 unused units should reduce the amount of water. That's not what the contract says, so we're sticking with what the contract says. And Gwen, I don't know if you're going to address, Gwen can get into the water, where it's allocated in terms of each specific unit. But if you have any questions about this, I'll take those now before I let Gwen and Chelsea carry on.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So Joe, clarify for me, it sounds like that with the maximum density of 3,154 units, but water for only 2,718 units, there's like a difference of 400 between how much water they have available versus how much units they have available. So how do we resolve that difference?
We resolve that difference by, they, they are not entitled to city water. For that gap, excuse me, that gap of about 400 units, they could buy units, different credits through the marketplace, or they could come to the city and ask us to approve them, and it would go through Water Issues Subcommittee and then to council. But they are not entitled to any water above 2718.
Councilmember Rusing.
That was my question, that the difference, they have, it's an alternate water supply they have to bring.
Well, we state in the development agreement that we would consider a request to use city water, but we're under, under no obligation to provide that. So presumably, they would come forward with alternative sources, affluent credits or extinguished, extinguishment credits or something like that. They could come forward with that, but we're under no obligation to provide above that amount.
Thank you. So Joe, in the development agreement, does it lay out, given the 350 deduction that happens, does it lay out any specification in the development agreement about how those 350 are distributed amongst the various units or subdivisions, however you want to talk about it?
No, you could presume that. But when we're talking about these defined terms, the defined term is for the area in total. Now, there are specific densities allowed in each individual unit. That would be the cap for that unit unless a density transfer was requested by the developer. I don't know if you're, does that make sense?
So you're, you're giving us the legal guidance that there is nothing in the development agreement that says how those 350 are to be distributed? So that's an area where we are disagreeing right now, and, and there's nothing in black and white to say who's right.
Well, the 350 is, reduces, is a reduction of the approved density. That's a defined term.
Correct.
Right. So that approved density is not broken down into the individual units. The individual units are made up of the preliminary plaits up to that 2718 number. So it wouldn't reduce by, by a unit by unit or applied kind of the 350 divided by how many units there are. It just reduces the overall maximum density. That's what the document says.
And I think part of the concern is, you know, when this was originally designed, you know, you want to spread density about and around. And so I think part of the concern is suddenly all the density is coming onto Prescott Lakes Parkway. And so I think that's why there's different, if I lived there, I'd want the density spread around. I wouldn't want all the extra units along Prescott Lakes Parkway. So I understand the concerns. But I'm just trying to understand, I've read the development agreement myself two or three times, and I couldn't find anything exactly saying how to do it. And I just wanted to have that conversation with you before Gwen sits up here and explains how she did it. [laughing].
Me?
Yeah, you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Rowich, Public Works Director. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the water because that's the part of this development agreement that my staff and I track. This is a spreadsheet that we've used for a number of years. You can see on the left, those are the preliminary plats that came in.
We actually can't see.
I'm sorry. It's rather small, but I'll just kind of explain to you what the different columns mean and where and how staff tracks the water for this particular development. As Joe Young mentioned, the water is capped at 2718. And that number is based on the first column, which defined, the first column is the names of the preliminary plats for Prescott Lakes subdivision that were submitted to ADWR in order to secure the groundwater rights for those particular developments. And so the 2718 is a culmination of all of the plats that you see in the first column. In the third column, or the second column, you see the year and the third column, you see the final plats. So that's how ultimately all of those preliminary plats played out over time. And then you can see that they're primarily residential. In the development agreement, the water is tied to dwelling units. And that is why some of the projects that are within Prescott Lakes, such as Basis School, the Commerce Center, et cetera, are not shown as having water in the table because they are not dwelling units. At that time, the water policy that was in place provided an allocation for non-residential uses within each residential amount of water that was handed out. So for example, during the time that our water was .35 acre feet for one single-family resident, .25 of that was for the residents and .10 was for all the uses in the city that supported that particular home. So that's why you don't see water set aside on the table, but we do track those uses. So Basis School is on our tracking sheet, Commerce Center, retail uses are on our tracking sheet, but we did not specifically grant water to them. Because we track the water by dwelling unit, this is sort of our summary table, hopefully you can see that there on the screen. In the first box, we give you the total number of dwelling units that were allocated. That's 2,718 units. The next number is the total number of dwelling units that were approved or constructed. So that would be your single-family residential, your multifamily residential. But again, it does not include non-residential uses, commercial-type uses. The next box is the total remaining number of dwelling units under the original allocation. So it's the 2,718 dwelling units minus 2,093, which is the number of dwelling units that I showed you in the previous table. It's the sum of--
Councilmember Rusin had a question.
Yes, I would, while we're having this discussion, several years ago, we had a Lafferty project in the, on the medical campus where the master plan shows nine medical offices and people in Parkside bought their homes with the intent that it was going to be nine medical offices. And then between Ascari and Lafferty, there were plans for a 200, I think, 24-unit apartment complex to go, where those medical offices were going to go. So could you explain how the water and the density applied to that, if it even did, how that happened?
So the water would only be applied to the apartments. It would not be applied to a medical-type inpatient facility. It would have only been applied to the actual apartments themselves. In other words, we only, we only count dwelling units. Apartments are dwelling units, just like single-family homes are dwelling units. But in any sort of inpatient care or assisted living facility where there's round the care, around-the-clock care, that would be considered a commercial or a non-residential use. So we would not have set aside water for that.
So, so they would have gotten water even though it was a big increase in density? And it would have, you think it would have complied with the master plan and the development agreement?
Well, I can't answer all of those questions, but I can answer the questions as it relates to water. And as it relates to water, we would have, we would have reduced the 2718 by the number of apartments, but we would not have reduced the water for the non-residential portion of their project, which would have been their inpatient care, you know, their round-the-clock care part. Okay. Let me just go back to the table. So you can see on the third line, the total number, the total remaining dwelling units would, is currently today, 625. So if a project were to come forward today with single-family or multifamily units, it would have to be less than 625 to be administratively approved under this contract. The next line shows the 786 units that Joe Young spoke of. Those are the additional units that they had the right to under the development agreement if they brought water or asked the city for additional water above the 2,718 units. The total number of dwelling units that would have been remaining if they exercised the right to the 786 units is shown there as 1,411. However, Mr. Young pointed out that they did not meet the requirement under section 3.7 of the development agreement, and that number was reduced by 350 dwelling units. So the total amount they could potentially have is 1,061, but they would have to bring additional water that they have not asked for and they have not brought to the table. So currently today, the short answer is currently today, if a project were to come to the city and ask for water for a multifamily or a single-family project, there are 625 water allocations available for those dwelling units. That is what is on the table today. They have the right to more than that if they bring more water or ask for more water, but that's not what is in their contract today.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, you used a word that has been controversial in the past. You said administratively approved.
Yes.
So you're saying that they could come to you and say, hey, we want this water to build a development in this development, and it doesn't come to the city council. It just goes through staff approval. Is that correct?
That is correct. This water is approved in a contract, and all contracts are administratively approved by staff as long as they follow the guidelines of that particular contract. That doesn't mean the project in and of itself is administratively approved, but the water portion of it would be up to an additional 625 units that are remaining.
I think that's really important for the community to understand the difference between what can be approved administratively by staff with a contract versus what council's involvement would be, because I think that was a large part of the controversy several years ago with the Lafferty project. People were kind of up in arms that city staff was allowing this to, or pardon me, that city council was allowing this to happen. In reality, it was a contract and we weren't involved in that. It was something that was done many, many years ago in a development agreement.
Councilman Gamboge.
I'll be the first to admit that I'm totally confused. So on this chart, it says in that yellow line that you, they could build another 625.
There are still 625 dwelling units permitted under the water--
Allocation.
--the water that was set aside for this project in the contract.
And then you say that, is it 786?
786. There's a section of the contract that allows the developer to either bring additional water or ask the city for additional water for 786 additional dwelling units.
Over and above the 625.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Chelsea? I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea now. And I'll go ahead and ask our IT friends to switch back to the presentation for us. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Councilwoman Montoya, do you have a question?
I did. I had a follow-up question for Gwen. I'm sorry for having a little technical difficulty up here. I'll let you get back up to the podium. Sorry, Chelsea, just real quickly. I, I'm not confused by all of that, so I'll give you a little bit of relief on that.
Thank you.
I was, I was tracking, but maybe because I remember when it came up last time. But following up on Eric's question, you mentioned this, he mentioned the idea of administrative approval. I'm curious if you could speak to, what is the criteria for staff to approve that? Like, is there like a, is it merely, are you in line with the contract and that's how you administratively approve it? It's not as if there's discernment that happens, right? I guess is what I'm getting at.
Um--
Yeah, not subjective. Discernment, maybe not, the right term.
I was going to say--
So it's--
That's not the right word.
It's not subjective, right?
It is not subjective. It is not subjective. And remember, giving water to a project is not something that happens in a silo. It's part of a bigger process.
Right.
And so we work with the planning department. They process whatever the request is. And then once we have an understanding of what the project is, we discuss how much water is being requested by the applicant, and we marry those two things together as long as the request for water falls within the guidelines of that particular development agreement. I will tell you that our development agreements are not standardized. Every single one of them is completely different.
That seems obvious at this point in my tenure on city council.
It's so complicated. So each one of them stands alone and we track each one on a spreadsheet similar to the one I showed you based on the criteria that was agreed to in that contract. And this contract is based on dwelling units. It's not based on other types of uses. It is based strictly on dwelling units.
I guess, let me ask you this question and then I'll, I'll let you go back, sit back down. But with, you couldn't say through the administrative approval that remains. If a project came forward and they said, we want to do 200 apartment units over here, and this is, this is, we're following within the guidelines of the master plan as we understand it, and we're following all the permitting process, your administrative approval doesn't allow you to say, you know, the residents really want the density spread out, so we can't approve this. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam, can you tell me?
Yeah, this question actually is for Joe Young, real quickly. Joe, I, I have looked into these master plans for years as a builder myself with my company. I don't think I've ever seen a master plan that will allow, in this case, 3,504 units, but only enough water for 2,718. Is that common? Because generally, when the planned area development takes place, the water is available.
Yeah, I would say it's not common.
So therein lies the problem.
Right. And we have a lot of development agreements and other contracts that have provisions that are not common, as you know.
Yeah, I do know.
And it definitely presents problems. Yeah, and we would like to not have these uncommon terms. But, and keep in mind, the reason why we have, part of the reason why it is structured the way it is, is because of all the previously, or the superseded agreements. So you had all these various agreements, and the older a development is and the older the entitlements are, the more you, likely you are to get this kind of strange result. But yes--
Well, I have worked in Phoenix, Scottsdale, Flagstaff, Peoria, Glendale, never have seen a situation where they approve a certain amount of units and the water is not attached to every single one of those units. So are we going to be doing this as we move forward?
We haven't had a new development agreement since I've been here. Council has not been too excited about new development agreements. But there are things in, I mean, they say development agreement's 21 years old. So there's things that we would not do now that was done back then.
Do we need a policy that says we cannot approve a development agreement with 3,500 units or whatever the number may be if the water is not available at the time?
That's up to council, but I think that would probably be some, a wise decision. And another being termination dates on some of these development agreements. We have 21-year-old agreements. We have agreements older than that, and they become more and more difficult to deal with. And so having an expiration date makes a lot of sense as well.
You know, I've been here now a few years and I've read a lot of these DAs because it seems like we're constantly having issues. Maybe we should develop a situation, and I'll leave it to the rest, we could talk about it, where we apply a policy and not only with the water attachment, but as you said, with the expiration dates and some of the other things that have snagged the city and your department in the last few years. It just makes sense to try to alleviate the situations that are causing us these problems. Anyway, maybe we can explore that. City manager? Thank you.
Well, I think that falls into the category of unintended consequences. I mean, years ago, we attached a .35 acre feet per residential unit. And then we realized that the actual allocation for the residential unit, single-family home was .25. And then we had picked a number out of the, out of the ether that said .10 should apply to a commercial support for a residential home. But it wasn't based on any real evidence. And then when we came up with a worm and were actually able to swat a resource management development software, we realized that that .25 was far too high. So we brought it down to .17. And then we didn't apply an arbitrary number on top of that because we were able to start monitoring and managing the actual commercial developments that impacted residential homes. So those things happened over the course of time. We didn't see it at the beginning, but we modified it as information became available. So trying to anticipate what may happen in the future when we have the Department of Water Resources making determinations about whether a 100-year water supply is actually available in areas, and they've made determinations that parts of the West Valley don't meet that now, so they're putting moratoriums on building. It's really difficult to be able to say, well, we should make a policy now that's going to work 22 years from now. So the best we can do is to monitor and make sure that our understanding of how water is used. I mean, we're still waiting for our decision order to maintain our assured water supply status. If that's lost, then we've got to go back to applying to the ADWR for 100-year assured water supply in individual homes or developments. So there's a lot of things that can happen. And I think having to look at these old development agreements that are 22, 23 years old and try to make some sense out of them now, when not only do you have dwelling units, but you have water units, which are not really how we manage water because it's not relating to a number of acre feet per unit. And then we have to look at the development agreement, find out who the signatories are to that, and whether they agree to move density around and where. It's a very complicated situation. So I think the more we understand it, the better we can make decisions on Prescott Lakes now. And then how those other contracts we have with their own unique components to them just requires a lot of study and understanding. So I'll get off my soapbox here and let Chelsea proceed.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. And I'm going to take us through the master plan, a high-level view, and then I have some questions for council that we're seeking input on as it relates to processing projects in the future. So for starters, master plans, what do they do? Typically, a master plan establishes uses and boundaries. A lot of times in Prescott and in other areas, master plans can be just bubble charts that establish a boundary and establish what uses are going to go in what sections of the map. Final plats, as it relates to Prescott Lakes specifically, are to be in general conformance with the, the master plan. And then all projects that come in are to conform to the underlying zoning and the master plan uses. So with Prescott Lakes, they didn't establish like a special planned community area other than a very small area in the center of their master plan, which came later. But as opposed to like Haciampa, as opposed to Deepwell Ranch, that had their own almost zoning book with their master plan document, what Prescott-- zoning book with their master plan document, what Prescott Lakes did was use underlying zoning that the city already had established to establish the areas of where their uses were going to be placed throughout the master plan, and what those would look like in the future, and what could be approved there. So this first map is the master plan that you will have seen in the amended and restated development agreement. This one's in color, though. This establishes the uses of, if I can get this to work. On the, the east side of Prescott Lakes Parkway, you see the mixed-use residential and commercial area in this section of the master plan. In addition, the, the legend kind of shows us mixed-use residential, commercial in that area, as well as the commercial uses for the Commerce Center area, as well as Petroglyph Office Point, and where the Prescott Lakes Senior Apartments are on the south side of South Blooming Hills Drive there. And then the other areas of this master plan included in the development agreement are related to the single-family housing that, that you see throughout the rest of the, the planned area development here. This next master plan was provided to the city, we recently discovered through records analysis. This was provided to the city in 2005, and it went to council August 9th of 2005. And it does the same thing. It provides a use table. The legend actually hasn't changed over what was on the previous map. But what this one does is locks in the, the lotting that the preliminary plats that had been submitted around this timeframe had put in. So this isn't a lotting document. The master plan is associated with the, the development agreement, and it requires updating when new preliminary plats come in and when the final plats come in. So when the, I think on this map, I think they have it called Falcon Point, which is now Astoria here, and then I think this one is Saddleback Estates and Predator Ridge. Those were preliminary platted, and they chose to update the master plan at that time.
Chelsea, Councilman Moore has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, just looking at this map cursedly, it would appear that most of the land has been identified for specific use. Is there room for 625 more dwelling units in this master plan community? Based on this map, it doesn't look like it from a land use perspective.
Sure.
So I'm just asking that question. It looks like most of it's spoken for, so to speak.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Right now, what we have, Astoria is built, is mostly built out. I think they have a couple of lots for infill. What was previously called Saddleback Estates is now being developed as, I believe, Astoria 2, or marketed as Astoria 2. And then Predator Ridge is now Peregrine Ridge, and that too is, is in some level of review. So you're right. The only areas that are vacant at this time are lots of areas in the Petroglyph Office Park, and then on the east and west side of the senior apartment campus there, as well as the, the frontage down in this area where the previous apartment project was proposed. That's, that's it. They have vacant parcels throughout, but the zoning has been established as single-family. So really, it would have to be very creative for them to get the 625 units. Multifamily in those, in those areas could get there, but, but that's yet to be seen.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question. It's hard to tell from this, this map, but down behind the waterfall in the corner of Prescott Lakes in 89, originally on the master plan, there's like a row of like 100 town homes that are, that were planned to go in there. And then now there's, there was a plan where the property was up for sale for four, a 400-unit apartment complex. So can you make some comments about what's going on there?
Sure. Well, as of right now, nothing is going on there. From what I can see in, in looking through the, the volumes of records that we have for Prescott Lakes, this was a concept, a mixed-use concept only. The projects that go in these areas have to conform to the underlying zoning, which is business, I believe it's business regional. That's in an upcoming slide. So they have to conform.
Councilwoman Business General, Pad.
Thank you, sir.
And what's BA, oh, excuse me.
That's business BA. BA, as you saw in the development agreement, was the previous zoning code's designation that was changed, I believe in 2000, later. So that was the previous city zoning designation.
So it's BG, PAD.
Correct.
Okay.
So as it relates to what can go there, it comes back to the, the actual underlying zoning, and we'll, we'll touch on that next. We can move on. All right. Let's talk about that PAD.
Councilmember Montoya had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, going back to that map real quickly, I'm curious, and maybe this, you, you can educate me on this a little bit, but with this master plan map here that specifies land use, how is it, is it possible that someone could go into Petroglyph Point Office Park, where it's designated as commercial, and do residential, like, high-density there? How, can you, like, maybe there's a way to do that? Is it the underlying zoning? Or is there something I'm missing?
They would have to meet all the criteria in the zoning code. So it, so it depends on what the nature of the project. If they are required to do a replat process, to combine parcels. But again, the project has to conform to the underlying zoning. And in the business general with the PAD, it is, it's very specific. You go to our Table of Uses 2.3 in the Land Development Code, and it tells you there's a lot of opportunity for what can be built there. But it just depends on how they're going to do it.
Is multifamily high-density one of those options, though?
Multifamily is. Density is related to the area of the lot, and how many dwelling units you could actually fit on whatever lot they're proposing.
Okay. I think I follow you. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So let's talk about the PAD that's attached to the zoning. So in our zoning categories, our zoning districts, you find all of our, all of our categories lined out, single-family, multifamily, et cetera. But PAD is not in that section of code. PAD is not a, a zoning designation. It is what our map is updated to when council provides an approval of a planned area development. And in the case of Prescott Lakes, the planned area development of Prescott Lakes was approved in the 90s by council action to establish its property boundaries and, and the master plan, it was approved as a large planned area development. And what that looks like on the map, this is a zoomed-in version of our current zoning map. And outlined in light blue, you'll see we've put the Prescott Lakes master plan area. So you can see that most of the areas inside of Prescott Lakes have the PAD attached, and that means that all of these areas are within that planned area development. You also see that there's areas outside of Prescott Lakes that also have that attached. That means at some point, those properties in that area are, are either subject to or close to a planned area development. And this is a good trigger for both the public and for staff, that we need to dig deeper. There is more than just, like, for instance, over here where you don't see the PAD attached, that area is just subject to regular zoning. When we see as staff the PAD attached, that means there's more than just the zoning code at play here. We need to look for a master plan, perhaps a development agreement. So it's a good trigger for both the public to understand that there's more at play than just the, the typical zoning. And if we go back, so when a planned area development, development gets approved with the provisions of the code, that's when the reference to the planned area development, the PAD, gets put on the zoning map. So let's talk a little bit about, going back to Councilman Montoya's question about what's the, the project? What, what can be done in those areas? So the project scope determines what can be done on the property. So.
Excuse me, Chelsea. But Councilman Moore had a question.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I was trying to get your attention prior to moving on to this next step, but that PAD designation within the master plan community, would you consider that like a zoning overlay?
No, PAD, we have in the code a list of overlays, and PAD is not an overlay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so starting from this slide, you can see that the areas mostly on the east side of Prescott Lakes Parkway are in the, the light red, which is the BG, the business general. So any projects that, that come in for, in, within that area of the map, will need to comply with business general zoning in the Land Development Code. So the project scope of what comes in really determines the process through the Land Development Code. So when there is no process required, and this is where our friends at Prescott Lakes are, are concerned that there isn't any entitlement process, and as you heard with water, there's already a contract. So many times, we've seen projects come in that, that do not require any further entitlement. If they meet the underlying zoning, and if they meet all of the particulars relative to the Land Development Code, they can move forward. However, process, I believe after we experienced the, the, the public engagement with the Petroglyph Office Park project, we said, "You know what? We need to get these projects out in front of the community as, as soon as, as possible, and really help facilitate that communication." So in the Land Development Code, the Community Development Director is given the discretion to require area neighborhood meetings, and that's what we did for this, the, the proposed and now expired 400-unit apartment project. They never got that far through the review process, but that was something that staff was using to really try to be proactive and communicate with the public.
Councilman Moore had another question.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, but I want to.
I missed your cue again.
That's okay. I was waiting for the mayor to call on me. Could you go back to that previous map that had the red business general? Thank you. Why is Astoria, and why is Peregrine Ridge being built in a business general pad when these are dwelling units? And, and that's a different zoning than business general? Can you explain that?
Absolutely. So within business general, multifamily is allowed within that zoning district.
Astoria is not single-family? I mean, they're connected, but aren't they individually home-owned?
They are permitted within that zoning district. Yes, they are single-family lots. And I apologize, when I said multifamily, yes. Multifamily and single-family are permitted within the business general.
That's what I was missing, was the single-family, because we have like residential areas in this business general area. So it's a little confusing.
Gotcha. Yeah, so the Land Development Code, when you get to the, the more commercial and overarching, a lot of those allow for residential uses, including multifamily and single-family. Okay, so the other thing, and this will play into what we discussed later and my ask from, for direction from council, there is another section of the Land Development Code that provides the Community Development Director the discretion to bring site plans to planning and zoning. The limited review that, that's placed on this slide is that the projects would not be triggering the planning and zoning review on their own. So essentially, I would be asking planning and zoning to perform a courtesy review, in essence. So they would still be looking at all of the same things, but I don't believe they could, and this might be a legal question, I'm not sure that they could reject a project that, that doesn't need to go forward to them for review. So this is provided through the Land Development Code, and the, the second statement on the slide there, we propose then to providing the information to council, because in, in our read of the Land Development Code, site plans that are referred to the planning and zoning do not need to go to council. Planning and zoning actually provides an approval, and then building permits can be issued. So in the, in the effort of providing information out and making sure that the community is aware and that the council is aware, the idea behind this discretionary review through planning and zoning, and then information to council, is, is what's being proposed. So.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad we're touching upon this topic of transparency. In the past, I've heard from the residents of Prescott Lakes, especially the HOA, that they haven't been included, they haven't been notified, especially this last Astoria 2 project, that they had no idea what was going on with it and had no input. So I think that we do need to include them, you know, make it a policy to include notification of the HOAs that have, or in master-planned communities.
Thank you. And I will say that those, the platted subdivisions do go through planning and zoning, and do go through council for approval. So those are public meetings.
Yeah, but the HOA didn't know about them.
Gotcha. Okay. We can do better at communicating. Thank you.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
So Chelsea, just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. If somebody comes before you, and you decide as a director that you would like to have some input, input from P and Z, if they come in front of you and, and they have complied with all of the requirements, what would be the point of going back through P and Z?
It would be a, I'll.
It's transparency and notice, so objections can be heard and so forth. And, and that's where currently our Land Development Code says we can bring it to P and Z for that purpose, for that transparency purpose. Now, it does put some frustrations on P and Z or to council when you see this type of thing, where you have limited review. But that's why we kind of want council input on whether you'd like us to, like to see staff exercise that discretion to force the P and Z review, and including, as we amend the Land Development Code, whether you'd like to see that sort of discretion for council reviews as well.
But I guess my point is, if there's no, if you're, it's almost like you're causing trouble. If, if the neighborhood couldn't make any changes anyway, and P and Z can't make any changes anyway, and the developers already complied with everything, I don't get the point, because I think it gets the neighborhood's hopes up that they can come in and modify everything, and that's, I mean, I, I'm all for transparency, but I think if you decide to do this, or we decide to do this, there has to be a, you know, probably, I don't know, maybe a little educational moment right up front that's basically telling the neighborhood, "We're only doing this for informational purposes, so you know what is going to happen," because they have complied with everything. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So are we just causing trouble? I don't know. I'm, I'm questioning it.
I think I'd go back to what Mr. Young said, just about transparency and providing a space to have a conversation about the project. But I think your point is well-taken, that an introductory kind of setting the table for that meeting of, you know, this is coming just as a, a point of information, so that we can, we can talk about it, but they do comply and, and kind of set the table educationally, like you mentioned.
Well, I, I understand it is good always to let the neighborhood understand what they're going to be hit with, because if it's, the impact to a neighborhood during a construction process is real. And I do think they have a right to know that, but I guess it's how you bring it forward, in making sure everybody understands, "We're just letting you know, this is going to happen, how it's going to impact you, but you can't change anything with the development, because it's already been approved, and they do comply."
And that's a good segue into our, our ask for council input. That's what we're, that's what we're looking for, is to have a good dialogue with council, and to see what you'd like us do, to, to do in the future. So already, you know, we're, we're requiring the neighborhood meetings, but what does council think about this other option?
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Thank you. I respectfully disagree. I think that city council is the government that's closest to the people, and we make the biggest, our decisions make the biggest impacts on their neighborhoods. And I don't think that we should have our hands tied by administratively-approved decisions. I think that city councils should be able to look at the whole project and make recommendations, and maybe require concessions, you know, like putting up fencing, because that's what we used to do. I've looked at other development agreements. We used to be able to ask the developer, say, hey, you know, you got a big drop-off there, can you put up a fence? Or do some landscaping? And look at the whole project from an aesthetic point of view. You know, I just look at that Wendy's on the corner of Fair Street there, across from Fry's, sticks out like a sore thumb. There's not even a fence. You know, you park your car there, open the door, your kids run out into the street, dogs, who knows what. And that's just an example of, I think, the city council, and also planning and zoning. We need to have a wider scope when we look at things. Planning and zoning is not zoning, it's planning and zoning. So I think that we should allow more of a liberal use, and it might keep us out of lawsuits too, because there's always neighborhoods rattling sabers at us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, mayor. I actually agree with the points Ms. Rusing just raised. I think transparency builds trust, and there's multiple subdivisions, this being one of the biggest ones, that doesn't trust city, the city right now, which includes us sitting up here on the dais. And so they don't feel like they've had their day in court, they get caught off-guard, and, you know, and I agree with Kathy, I've seen us be able even on whiffs to get things accomplished just by talking to the developer in a public setting. It's amazing what that puts on developers' considerations of things they're willing and not willing to do. And so, yes, I would be, you know, very interested in not only having the neighborhood meeting performed by the applicant, but if, you know, the HOA would like members of council to attend, I think we should be going. And I do also believe, the points that were raised earlier, that some of these development agreements go on for 40 or 50 years. I mean, I'll be dead, and future councils might be reviewing things up in Deepwell Ranch, for example. So I really do think that getting councils in light of things change, I think it's worth having multiple eyes. I understand it's, it puts us at risk. I do understand it puts the council at risk. A future council could say, no, I don't want to do that, and meanwhile, they have the right. And next thing you know, we'll be in lawsuits. But we're in lawsuits right now, that we don't even need to be in. And so I'd rather be in lawsuits that we need to be in, you know, if things aren't done right in the future. So I'm absolutely leaning in the direction of doing as much as we possibly can, and particularly with Prescott Lakes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
Sounds a little bit like we're boiling the ocean here, so in answer to your question, I think it ought to go through P and Z.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Just to clarify, I agree with you on that, but I was speaking solely to the planned area development that's already codified and we can't change. Now, if you back it up, I would love to have, you know, if somebody is coming in front of the community development, and then P and Z, and then to us, that is the time that we can make those changes. But after this one was codified back in, what, 1990s, we can't make those changes. But I'm in favor of what you're saying, so long as it's a brand-new pad, planned area development, and a brand-new DA. At that is the time that we can make those changes, and yes, those do need to come in front of us. But as it concerns this Prescott Lakes, that ship sailed already, and otherwise, I think, you know, I think there would have been some changes made, but that's the reason they do DAs, so they can't be changed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. I was going to make a point similar to what Connie just made. I think while what Councilwoman Rusing and Ferworth mentioned is good for future projects, the problem is, we've got a development agreement that was approved in 1999 and then confirmed in 2004. We have this 21-year-old development agreement that the community that you live in signed off on, and your community is being held responsible to that development agreement and that master plan from 2004, and we can't change that. And so, yeah, we can have community neighborhood meetings, and we can have site plan review, but for a project that's already been under contract, it's not like we can go back and change the contract. We can't. That was the very first slide that we saw today. We cannot, the city cannot modify or amend the master plan. That was the very first slide we saw today.
City clerk, how many public comments do we have?
We have two, mayor.
Okay. All right, we're getting a little short here, so I want to make sure we have enough time to listen to the public. Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. This will be my last comment. I just wanted to, to the degree that you're seeking input, I do think neighborhood meetings are good, site plan review process taken through P and Z with limited review for information to council as well. I'm in favor of those things. I kind of agree with, I think, what Mayor Protam said at the beginning, though, you probably need to caveat, have a caveat at the beginning of that meeting, that we're not, you know, I think where people get the misunderstanding is that we have the ability to make massive adjustments to these development agreements, and unfortunately, we don't.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I think at this point, we can listen to a public comment.
Jim Orr.
My name is Jim Orr. I'm on the board of directors for the Prescott Lakes Community Association. Last we were here on, I believe it was November 5th, my message was of belief, and we made a request. And the request was for sunlight on this project and projects of this magnitude. I believe that this council provided some sunlight. While we didn't get the solar flare to cauterize the wound and keep the patient alive, you know, permanently, he's still in ICU, and we need some work to go here. So, couple things from where we come from. We hear a lot of statements attributed to Prescott Lakes Community Association. I've heard in public meetings, we're anti-development, anti-builder. Nothing would be further from the truth. We support responsible growth, responsible development that follows our rules, your rules, county rules, state rules. That's all we're asking here. Secondarily, we as a board, our philosophy of a board is, we try not to blame. We don't defer, we don't deflect. We try to engage in problem-solving. That's what we've tried to do with you all. But part of the process of problem-solving is, we have to look at the history of what occurred and how we got to this point. So briefly, in late 2018, we had some very knowledgeable members, much smarter than I, who started attending city meetings about planning, development, building zones, water, et cetera, and they started raising the issue about the development agreement and the master plan not being followed. And it's documented in the records, I won't bore you with those, we provided them to you already. But in retrospect here, and to continue with my medical philosophy here, my analogy, the autopsy on our association is this: we let our members down because we didn't follow up when they raised those issues. We would find out that the developer, guess what, let the permits expire to pulled out. We would plant the flag, and everybody would cheer, and we think we won the issue. So we're here to tell you, we are not going away. I've heard some comments today, I mean, you know, obviously, we disagree with the one big issue, I'll discuss in a moment, but that was, that was our problem. We freely admit that we didn't follow up, and we did a poor job. However, during this time from 18 to 24, and we started studying it, you know, again, not to be disparaging, but for the public to understand what was going on here, we had city staff say the development agreement was expired, the master plan wasn't in play. We had city staff say they could unilaterally change things, they could assign density. They basically said that the Prescott Lakes Community Association had no standing, even though we're a signator. So that's where a little of the animosity comes from. I don't believe we have that today. I believe we're in a better place, but just so you understand the history. You know, here's what I believe about this council and the mayor, and while I disagree with Mr. Young on one issue, I think he's an honorable man, and unfortunately, I had to bring our attorney here today to keep me in line, so I'll be cautious with what I say. So here's one for you. Those of you that read Lee Childs, he has a character that gets in trouble occasionally. During one of these troubling times, I'm paraphrasing his statement, and it was this. He said, "When issues arise, there's two kinds of people. There's the first group that band together to solve the issue, and there's the second group that bands together to immediately prove they didn't cause the issue." I believe this council, this board, our members, were the group that wanted to get together and solve the issue. I believe we're close. So that's, that's kind of that. The more troubling stuff, just to make it quick here, really, I believe what we're down to is, a couple things just recently said. There's a contract, we've got to go with the contract. Contract can be changed. The signators of the development agreement can band together, and we can change it, and then we bring it to you, and you can authorize it. So it can be changed. This is not something of perpetuity. Nor do we believe that in 1999 or 2004, when the council voted for this development agreement, they voted knowing that no future council in history of this agreement could ever review or have input on this. That's ridiculous, in my opinion. Did I get in trouble there? No? Okay. So here's the deal. City staff has no more authority to determine methodology of density calculation than we do. We have the same authority. And I would just offer this: we have had multiple attorneys from different law firms over the years look specifically at density, independently researched by them, and all four of them came to the same conclusion that density should be calculated in the manner we're presenting. Unfortunately, Mr. Young so far disagrees with us, but I'm hoping to bring him to our side of the table. So if we're looking at the odds, 80% say we're correct. Doesn't mean we're going to win anything, but with those kind of odds, in the future, if this comes up again, and it's a density calculated in this manner, I think you can all see where we're going to be, unless we can come to some sort of agreement. So that's all I'm asking, that we continue to work together, as we have, in good faith, and that we, we eventually will come to an agreement. I do believe that. I believe we're going to get it solved. But there's, there's a suggestion here also about neighborhood meetings. I recall the Mr. Lafferty meeting about the apartments proposed at Petroglyph. It accomplished nothing. It was very hostile, both sides, but ultimately, if you read the record on that, you can see it was clear, he was upset about it. So I believe that, in a perfect world, maybe now we get a little bit better, I'm a proponent to have that kind of information, because I think more data is always good. So that's just my caution. The other thing, too, is the neighborhood meetings are not binding on anyone. So you can come, you could hug, you could scream, you could yell, but it doesn't really matter, and if somebody's just checking the box, because they have to comply with something to come to a neighborhood meeting, it's counterproductive. Clarify one thing also. We did have a town hall regarding Saddleback, not the marketed name of Astoria Two. It was August of '22 or '23?
Mr. Orr, can you please conclude your remarks?
Yep. Okay, well, just to let you know, Mr. Fan did conduct one there, and we had a meeting with him. So ultimately, here's what we're asking, Mr. Mayor and council. We'd appreciate to keep working forward. We try not to involve any more of our attorney's time unless we have to, but we are on completely solar opposite on density and calculation method. And lastly, to be repetitive, again, city staff has no more authority to dictate methodology than we do. So therein lies the problem. You can't force it upon us, and we can't force ours on you, so hopefully, we can come together. Thank you.
Jim Garing.
Oh, good afternoon, mayor and council dermatologist. So, I'm not going to say very much. You guys have received a very long, detailed email today that has an enormous number of points in it, and it's going to take time to go through it. My suggestion is that staff go through it, and council, I know you have a lot to read, and let's meet again, because we are way apart. So I'll answer any questions you have. Hearing none. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, Jim, I have, I have a question. You live in Parkside, and it was your subdivision when you bought it, you knew there was going to be a medical office complex...
Yes.
...in your backyard. So, and you knew you were in a master plan community, and you made this decision to invest a lot of your life savings into this beautiful home, so that you could, I don't know, golf every day?
Yeah.
And then somehow, one day, you rolled out of bed and found out there was going to be a 224-unit apartment complex there. So I think that does create a problem, and we need to make sure that this doesn't keep happening going forward.
I agree with that, and I won't go into much detail on the 224 units, but it was not in conformance with the master plan, and there wasn't the density for it. And since you've touched on Peaks Two, Peaks Two is where Petroglyph Point Office Park is, and it's where Senior Campus is. Here's the problem we get into when the city mismanages development in Prescott Lakes. Peaks Two was allocated 150 density units by the development agreement. You know how many are in there now? 209.
Is that Highgate went in there?
Highgate went in. That's not in conformance with the master plan. And here's the problem that you haven't thought about. There are a number of vacant lots in Peaks Two, and there are no more density or water service units available. What do you think those lot owners are going to do when they figure that out? So, any other questions? Thank you.
All right, any other questions or concerns from council? And we have about 10 minutes before our voting meeting begins, so this study session is adjourned.